Um, okay. So, welcome everyone to the Town Council Workshop. January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. As you can see, we're fully remote due to the weather outside. I will begin with roll call. And Matthew can just join us when he gets a chance. Counselor Gass?
Oh, sorry, present.
Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor McGuire? And I'm present also. I'm Counselor Chapel. And joining us are Justine Hutchings, our Finance Director, and Josh Tiffany, our interim Town Manager. Looks like we have Kyle on the line also, our interim Communications IT Director.
Hello.
So, Justine, thank you for providing all the materials in the packet. Do you want to just get us started? I know you prepared a PowerPoint. No, are you able to share your screen?
Uh, yeah, give me just one second. So I actually don't have the PowerPoint because I thought that it would just be part of the packet, like shared on the Zoom screen.
Oh, yeah, I can try to do that myself.
I can, if you guys are okay with that, I can just scroll through this agenda packet. It's the same material.
Yeah, we're fine viewing the agenda packet. That's no problem.
All right. You guys can all see yourselves soon.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Justine, could you enlarge the font a little bit? Just blow it up on your screen a little bit.
I will do my best. All right, so we'll be discussing just the initial revenue projections for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Is that better for everybody?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so you'll see right here in this left-hand column, we have fiscal year twenty-four budget, which is of course what was budgeted last year. Rolling into next year, for the most part, we've just made some small adjustments. But I would like to discuss some of the larger ones that you might notice, starting with these building fees. So in looking at fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, I was seeing earned revenue of one forty-eight or one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and one hundred and thirteen thousand respectively. And year-to-date, in this fiscal year, we've earned ninety-nine thousand, almost one hundred thousand. So, I went ahead and budgeted one thirty-seven five. Unless somebody with more longevity here can speak to the seventy-five thousand dollar figure, I felt the one thirty-seven five was more appropriate.
Yeah, if I recall, that was decreased in FY twenty-four from FY twenty-three, so I think it makes sense to bump it back up.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's that. And our next one, and not quite so large jump relatively, auto excise tax, kind of the same deal. Just looking at fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-three, we're earning on average two point one million, so I felt it was appropriate to bump that up to two million, so a little on the conservative side. Boat excise tax, also based off of averages. Moving along, you won't see many other large adjustments. Stop me if there's anything you guys would all like to speak about.
Oh, I just want to note the jump, the increase in landfill stickers.
Yeah, I was just about to mention that.
Yeah, last, our last budget cycle, we approved the increase from five dollars to ten dollars. So FY twenty-four fees should be at ten dollars per sticker rather than five dollars for at least this portion of the year and into FY twenty-five. So I'm imagining that's the increase there.
I will double back on that. Randy was very nice and provided me with his revenue budget. So I'll double back and make sure that that is the case.
Okay.
I would just comment that, should that be called landfill stickers? Or should it be transfer station or, you know, recycling something? Because not that much, it's landfill, I don't think. Because it goes to RWS. Just to, just to comment on.
It might be a dated nomenclature.
Yeah.
Yeah, something you'll know, you'll notice, Matthew, as we go through, there's a lot of the things we have names for. Kind of dated, but that's not to say we shouldn't update them if possible.
Right. I'll, I'll see. I mean, I shouldn't, I should be able to update the titles on the accounts. Yeah, good point. Okay. Moving right along. And as I said, most of these are based off of the three complete years. All right. So moving along, what I did was I put this all into this bar chart, which will show twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And just please, everybody watching, note that this lightest column is for year-to-date figures. So if you see striking differences such as this, that's, we are halfway through the year. And as far as intergovernmental goes, I think that's just, well, I don't think. There's Betty and what else? There's a couple of things in the intergovernmental revenue funds that didn't exist in prior years that do now. And so you see those large adjustments or large revenue changes in current, more current years.
Is that, that's not just state revenue sharing, that's something else?
Right, yes. Namely, like Homestead and Betty.
Oh, okay.
Do we have anywhere within your revenue spreadsheets that you capture those numbers?
Yes, actually. I have an Excel spreadsheet where I've, I've pulled all of the revenue reports from Trio, and I've got it tabbed for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
So, where would we see that? When we're looking, when we're trying to get a snapshot of the whole revenue picture, sort of everything together. Have any?
Um, that's something I don't mind sharing with you all, if you want. It's very just full of notes and formulas. But I can definitely share that. I think it helps give a good picture of where we're heading when it comes to revenue.
Could it, could it be a line on this spreadsheet that you've shared with us?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Could it be a line or additional lines on this spreadsheet you've shared with us tonight?
There are quite a few lines. But yeah, we could see how we might be able to work that in.
I mean, I'm just curious, you know, just trying to get a grip on all the different sources of revenue. Like, for instance, in the, if you look on page six, the transfers, you've got a million and a half dollars in the unassigned fund balances.
Right.
For this year. We don't have anything in the and then you, and then you have, like, the Recreation Enterprise Fund. Those other funds have balances too, correct?
You said they have balances in them?
Yeah, that's a question. Do they have?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, wouldn't we consider that revenue that potentially can be used for next year?
So I took this as, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I took these sections as conversations that would need to take place on if we were going to transfer from these funds. So I did not put any values in these, these transfer sections. I figured that would be a conversation that would need to happen down the road.
I think, you know, it's, that's part of what tonight's about, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I guess, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, property taxes is another thing that obviously is a huge source of revenue that I would think we'd see here, too.
Well,
Right.
I think FY twenty-four property taxes could be more, more precise, but anything we'd see for FY twenty-five would just be an estimate, just, just like all the other bros. Since we haven't decided on a mill rate or anything like that yet, nor do we have input from the district on their schools.
Yeah, but I think that knowing, like, we know what was budgeted for revenue, we know where we are for revenue. Like you said, the property taxes are, we pretty well know what that number is going to be. I guess I was thinking that when we talked about revenue, we'd have sort of one-stop shopping that would show us all the different sources of revenue that we have.
Right. So this form, or this spreadsheet right here, this Excel spreadsheet, I just pulled that from last year's budget presentation, assuming that this is what you all are familiar with seeing, or this is what is most heavily discussed. But if we want to look at the broader picture, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think I'm, I, I would like to see a little more detail about what's available, not just what we've decided to utilize. Because it's hard to make those decisions without knowing what's available.
Right.
I don't know how difficult that is to reformat this content. I mean, the majority of it with all the fees and everything, that makes sense. I think it's just these parts, like Dan's referencing, where we have transfers that we could make. And then adding some property tax information, and also the state revenue sharing estimates, which I know you have on the bottom there.
Yes.
But there, are they in the total? I didn't, I didn't get out my calculator, so I'm just is the state revenue sharing in those totals?
Yeah, this state revenue sharing and anything up here in these transfers, I was clicking through the formulas in this, and they are not playing into this.
Okay, yeah, because ideally, we'd like to see a total that's reflective of all of that.
Right.
And then I, I did have a comment regarding the transfers, particularly from the TIPS that we've noted here. I do believe there should be transfers there for FY twenty-four that aren't noted.
Okay.
So we should figure that out, just for comparison's sake.
Right, and those, those transfers were authorized in our FY twenty-four budget. They may not have been requested yet, correct, right? But, but we did authorize them.
Correct, yeah.
So I expect to see numbers for that. So I mean, we have, in my, in my mind, we have all the, we have the three TIF accounts. We have the special revenue accounts, some of which we can spend, but some of which is being saved for other issues. We have the enterprise account, which of course is recreation, which is kind of another conversation on the side. We had the CIP bond, and there were some un-expended revenues from that, but I think that's all been resolved, a hundred percent sure. And then we have the Capital Reserve Fund, the property taxes, we have the state revenue sharing that you showed us, and then all the general fund revenue sources which are on the sheet, you know, excise taxes, government fees, etc. Ultimately, I think what we want is a document that shows us all of that. Whichever form is sort of easiest to produce.
Right.
Ideally, I envision a point in time where you can print stuff off Trio or whatever system we're using. It doesn't, you know, we're gonna end up with spreadsheets to some extent. Is that, those fair assumptions?
Yes.
Am I the only one having trouble hearing Dan?
I think there's a lot of background noise.
Yeah, I would just ask.
I don't know where who it's coming from.
Right, I would just ask if we all could be muted unless we're talking. I think that might help. I was just muting my sound. Matthew, did you have anything else, or you just were wondering about the sound?
I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead, Marty.
Do we get paid by the state to plow the state roads?
That might be part of our local roads assistance program, but I would need to school myself up more on that.
Amount of money. You could have a different conversation about whether that covers the bill or not, but it is a fixed amount based on those agreements with the state.
Does anybody else have any questions or some points that you would like to discuss?
So, so miscellaneous revenue is, is property taxes basically, or just a, that's a, what's encompassed in there?
Yeah, I'm actually glad you asked.
That general government? I'm having a little trouble distinguishing some of these colors, but the gray is the seventy-nine point two-six.
Correct. Um, which is general government, and then this green right here is miscellaneous revenue, which is like gravel pits, driveway opening, I've got zoning board applications in there, Blueberry Festival, planning board fees, so on and so forth.
So what's included in, in general government? Is that the tax revenue, property tax revenue?
Um, actually, in there, you've got, if you scroll right back up. This is, um, like, auto excise tax, boat excise, investment interest, interest on delinquent taxes. And then we've got our library fees and rescue fees.
So that, in that pie chart, the tax revenue is not represented.
Right.
Where did you find those numbers on your, on the spreadsheet?
Uh, that was on page five. Well, I'm sorry. My pie chart, what I did was I based my pie chart off of totals from fiscal year twenty twenty-two, just because that is our last audited year.
Okay. So the miscellaneous revenue that is on, on our packet, page six, that miscellaneous revenue line is the total of everything before it. That three billion, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six ninety-eight number.
I think that line is mislabeled. I think that is a total of
Of everything before.
Yes. Total. There's actually a few things about this spreadsheet that I wouldn't mind rearranging. Like I said, I just pulled this from last year's budget presentation, assuming this is what everybody was most familiar with.
Yeah, I, speaking only for myself, I encourage you to throw all of that away. I mean, I, it's, I almost think of it as contagious in some negative way, but I, I just don't think much that you're gonna find there is better than anything you would create on your own. Probably spend more time monkeying around with that, trying to make sense of it than if you started fresh.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think, I think you should, I mean, if, if this is working for you, then what, whatever minor adjustments you need to make to make it accommodating, you know, to accommodate the requests we've had, I think you could certainly do that, but I, you know, if you have something better that might capture what the things we're asking for, then I'd certainly be in favor of looking at a different format.
Right. And I'm okay with changing it up, too. I just, like I said, just going with what's familiar. I can look around, not look around. I can definitely dress this up more and give it some, I think, much-needed updates.
Yeah, I would, I would add, I would agree with Kristin and Dan, that, I mean, what's familiar doesn't seem like what we want. Uh, yeah, that last budget process was not a model for anything, I wouldn't think.
Okay, you know, I, I think, just to, in appreciation of Justine's time, I, I wonder if we can give her a little bit more feedback on what it is we do want to see, or unless you feel like you've got a good idea of that, Justine. I just don't want you to be spending hours, you know, being, you know, nervous or anxious about what it is, you know, trying to guess what we want when we could just tell you.
Right, I was just taking notes on that. So I was, you know, more inclusive revenue spreadsheet, which, because there are certainly more lines where we collect revenue that aren't presented in this spreadsheet. So more inclusive revenue spreadsheet, which includes transfers or yes, transfers TIPS, CIPs.
Property taxes.
Yes.
Yeah, to me, that's, that's the, the biggie is to put all this other revenue in the context of the larger budget. And like in that pie chart, it would be good to know what, you know, what part of the pie chart is property tax.
My thought with property taxes, because it is so early in the game, is just to, for the draft, while we're just in the early stages of this budget, go ahead and roll forward with what was established for fiscal year twenty-four and make adjustments as we go on, if needed.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, I would leave it, I would leave FY twenty-five property tax line blank myself. But I think knowing what we're actually collecting for property taxes is I mean, I'd be glad to send you the, there's basically, you know, eight buckets that I can think of, that I kind of read off earlier, that I think those eight buckets capture every way money sort of trickles into the town. I can send you that list if you're interested. I think I'd suggest that might be a good way to organize it, but
Well, we, we do have it as one of our warrant articles also, if that's, if that's what you're referring to, Dan.
Yes.
The break, the breakdown there.
Yep, I think that's exactly the way we should do it. I don't know if I can blend it up on the screen right now, but I could show that.
And and I can share the data that I pulled from the last three complete fiscal years to give you guys all an idea of how everything has been trickling in as well on the book side of things.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that, some just historical references. That was a big question I had last year when the numbers were being changed. I really couldn't get a lot of feedback about why and how they were coming up with the numbers. So if you have that data, just, I think it would be useful.
Yeah, I'm huge on like, you know, there's no way you can keep it all up in your head or keep track of it, so I'm huge on when I do make changes to numbers. I always make a note somewhere. I, I really like to add it to the cell itself. That way I can always back up the change that I've made and remember it myself, just because there's so many moving parts.
Dan, could I, could I ask, were you suggesting that this spreadsheet should be organized around the the warrant article that you mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah.
If I could.
I think, I think to the, to, yeah, I think to the extent that we can have things organized around the warrant articles, that's, that was kind of our intent, right? I, I agree with that.
Can I share my screen for a second? Do I have the ability?
Yes. Yeah, I'll stop sharing.
I was gonna say, yeah, Justine needs to stop.
Can you see that at all?
Yes.
What I want. You see the municipal budget revenue, or are you still seeing the gray?
Oh, we're seeing the gray website.
Yeah, we just see the
Municipal meeting.
Portal, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'll need a lesson before I can do this successfully.
There's a, Dan, there's a share button right next to the leave button, uh, right at the top right-hand corner of my screen. I don't know if it's the same with yours.
Yeah, I see that, and I clicked on that, and it gives me a list of choices, but I don't see how I can just share my
Did you open the document?
Dan, when you hit share, try and then hit screen. So share and then screen.
Sorry about the play. There we go. Can you see that? The spread says municipal revenue.
No, we're just looking at each other's faces.
This isn't, this isn't worth spending any more time on, but
Would you want to just read what you're looking at? Yeah.
Yeah. We've got the Capital Reserve Fund, the Enterprise Account Revenue, Federal Funds, General Fund, other sources of funding, which are the donations and things. Property tax, special revenue, state funds, tax increment funding, and unassigned and general. Those are the current warrant article buckets for and eventually, however we arrange it, we have to provide figures for each of those. I'm not sharing anymore. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Sorry, yeah, I couldn't be more useful than that. Yeah, I think you, it's, it's in that, you know, that three-page summary that I shared with everybody, and we talked about in your office that day, Justine. That's the, that's the document that has those.
Right, and that would be a part of our last workshop's agenda, right? I'm trying to get it pulled up, just so I can follow along.
Ultimately, yes, to, to pull all that together into that document. That's where we have to end up.
Yeah, I think we shared it over email. We didn't have the packet published with, it was provided the night of, so in an email, so.
Yeah, I, I had a conversation with Justine in her office with it, so.
Oh, okay.
She knows what I'm referring to.
Yep.
Yeah, I have that document. I don't have it here immediately available, but I do have it. I know what you're talking about, Dan.
Yeah. I mean, this is early days. I agree, I want to second Ian's comments about the, we don't want, we want to keep the stress level low.
Yeah.
It's, this is a team sport. And, so, and, you know, and if, if we're not clear, you need to let us know and not be concerned that we're gonna have a problem with that.
No, this is helpful, because coming into tonight, I was like, just felt like I would go with what was presented last year before I came on board, and kind of get your guys' feedback on what you want to see going forward, or changes that you want to see made going forward. Like I said, there are a few things about that spreadsheet that I think could use some updating, and maybe we just do away with it all together and give something that's a little bit more representative.
That sounds good to me. Thanks, Justine. One question I, one, one question I did have was that our, on the spreadsheet you provided, you noted the state revenue sharing was the same number. I'm just, I can't recall when we get those final numbers from the state. And then, if we, if you don't know that answer, we can find that out, but I'm just wondering if you know, if we're expecting a similar amount, or if you think it would show, because last year it was lower than the year before, so I know it's based on our valuations.
I just asked, I asked Lauren about that recently, and I, I might have this wrong, but I want to say she said around late March.
Yeah, okay.
I would have to get you a more solid response on that. I vaguely recall the conversation. I just know we said it was too soon to make any projections, so we stuck with what was budgeted last year, and it's just gonna be another one of those things we'll have to adjust when the time comes.
Yeah, if I recall, it's, it's based on our valuations, which don't come in from the state until April, but I just, I didn't know if Lauren had a good sense of it, whether or not she thought that might be shifting or going up or down.
No, nothing that she felt confident in, if she does, it's nothing that she felt confident enough in saying we should change the, you know, the initial draft, and we just felt it was a safer bet to maintain last year's level until we know more.
Okay, Matthew?
Yep. Back to the warrant articles, I would like to, I, I, I found it, and I want to try and share it, just to make sure we're, I understand what we're talking about. If you guys would bear with me for a second, see if I can do it. Is that? Can you guys see that? So this is what we're talking about?
Oh, yes, there, there it is.
Expand it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense to me, that that would be the, sort of, the model.
Yep.
All right. And then, let me know if you, if we want to look at it more, but I just wanted to make sure that
You have to teach me how you did that, but anyways. I, I, actually, the valuation numbers, we don't come in until July. So that's one of the reasons why we have to wait till the last minute, because it's the best guess based on everything else we have at the time.
Yeah, so, I mean, Teams has been my, you know, like, window to the world since 2020, so.
So March was a way off, still learning when all these different revenue sources trickle in, and like, the local roads assistance program is another one I have a question about, and when we can expect those numbers, because I think I remember that one changing last year. I want to say after I came on, but I'm not quite sure. It seems like there's a few things that are latecomers when it comes to our planning of the budget.
One, one thing I'd like to raise earlier, and it's not directly related to revenue, but I was looking at, how, last year I had the opportunity to look at how South Portland was presenting some of its budget documents, particularly as they relate to increases, new projects, and for every new project they had, they had not only the total cost and what that would mean for property taxes, but also they were estimating any mill, mill rate changes that would result from those, from those increased expenses, and I don't, I don't know how hard it would be to capture that. I know the mill rate is all an estimate until we finalize our numbers and receive those valuations from the state, but I just thought it would be helpful to have that as a reference, at least if it's an estimate. I don't, I don't know how difficult that would be to capture, though.
I can talk with Lauren and get more information about that, and
Yeah, sometimes it was something as small as like 0.02%, and, you know, it was increased, but it, it's just, it kind of captures the impact a little better than just the raw numbers.
Right, and property taxes seem to be a lot of the times the bottom line. So I think it's helpful to, like, members of the community feel like they're able to make a more informed decision when they see bits of information like that.
Yeah, exactly.
The mill rate is a funny duck, it's it's kind of like averages, and, you know, means all the rest of it. It, it presents information of a particular kind of way, it represents the whole, the whole picture. It certainly is what everybody's focuses in on, I think, just because it's kind of easy.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly agree, Dan, but I, but I think because so many people focus on it, it's better to have the information as we, as we can provide it. Just muted myself. Does anyone have any further input for Justine regarding revenue, or do we feel comfortable moving forward?
Sure.
I don't have any more. Thank you, Justine, for, it's always hardest to start it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, before we adjourn, though, and I failed to put this on the agenda, and I, I meant to, but I wanted to just leave a little bit of space for anybody online who'd like to make, from the public, who'd like to make a comment. I'd just ask that if you have a comment, you try to keep it brief, somewhere around three minutes, since we do need to adjourn promptly at seven before our next meeting. I believe we only have two people, or we maybe only one at this point, who are online listening, but please feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. I think our one guest says they're all set, thanks. Kyle, are you seeing anyone else online besides the one extra person?
Nope, I think, I think Andrew's Arisole viewer today.
Okay, great, I just want to make sure I was at that correctly. Okay, well, if no one else has anything related to revenue, or does anyone have any budgetary things they'd like to raise, if we have a couple extra minutes here? No?
I just want to say that, or, last year, we did not put up the, even shell of the website until March for the revenues, and it was not actually posted until April 5th. So I don't know what came and went, but that's at least when we made the information public last year.
On regarding revenue in particular, or? Okay.
Yeah, just the revenue sheet, everywhere, on the website, everything was kind of rolled out, March 5th, and then each document is dated. So the revenue sheet that was put out for the first budget last year came out on April 10th.
Okay, that's helpful. I'd like to get it out earlier, but it's good to have a point of reference. So I just want to remind the public that our next opportunity for the budget is, input is February 6th at 6 o'clock at the workshop. Prior to our regular meeting, we're just asking members of the public to come and share with us their thoughts and opinions regarding the budget, what they, what they'd like to see, what they would, in fairly open conversation, we're not providing a lot of detail. We really want, we don't want to dictate, we'd like to hear from members of the community. Josh, I just want to check in, we were hoping to do a mailer for that February 6th input session, just want to check in on the status of that.
Yep, we had, I was working with Kyle, we have a very solid draft between us that I think is good to go, and Kyle, do you have any timeline on that?
I'm happy to share the draft with you folks as soon as you are ready to see it.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to see it as soon as possible. I think the sooner we get it in people's mailbox, the better.
Sure, I will send it around tomorrow morning.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? No, all right. Well, why don't we adjourn at 6:41, we can reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting, which has a separate link, as I learned earlier, so.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah. All right, goodnight, we'll see you guys. It's in the agenda, it's in the agenda online, Matthew.
Okay.
Okay.
Hopefully I can find it.
All right.
On the meeting portal.